Okay, good evening and welcome to the June ninth Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item on the agenda is visitors' comments for items that are not on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak?
Which has got to be here.
Yes, my name is Randy J. Sac, High Street Thorndike. Here because of the master plan and what it left me for a view looking out my picture window and the whole side there, the other side of the street they boarded up. Now I look at nothing but the roof. I can show you the...
The no roof, you mean, just the steel girders is what you're seeing, yeah.
Right, and there's graffiti underneath it.
Right.
That's my front window I look out.
Oof, it's a ghost town.
Yeah, I see it. See it from my house.
Okay, where is that?
It's still...
What I'm looking for is an explanation. Why if you can't protect their butters when you let work come into town? There's no reason why I have to live now the rest of my life sitting there looking at that because you got your tax back tax money. And now up to date, you're in the same boat. They owe back taxes again from as of six four two thousand twenty-five. Okay? And I want to know where it went wrong. Did it go wrong in the planning board? The building department? Even your lawyers could give you any kind of device, you know, advice to do something from this stopping. I'm here to tell people in town that if you've got a master plan going into your neighborhood, you better fight like mad because this is what you can get. And there's the proof. What I just showed you.
Do you want to comment?
I would like an explanation either next town meeting or whatever. I'll be here.
Yeah, so I can make it pretty simple for this one unfortunately. Due to the ongoing legal issues between the parties that are involved with that parcel, unfortunately I cannot make a public comment on that.
Well, then I just have to keep looking at it, right? That's pretty nice. I bet if anybody else had that in front of their house, they wouldn't be too happy.
I think we all get the frustration on it. It just is unfortunately part of the legal process is they're going through the channels right now and it may take...
That's what I was gonna say.
It may take a while.
Yeah.
And there's no way we can put any pressure on the property owner to do some sort of like blacking out the windows or, I mean, I know constructing a new roof is...
It's the roof.
The roof.
I'm up so high, that's all I say, okay?
Yeah. Because...
Don't turn it down.
But that's where I...
Right to the ground.
In full transparency, that may be where the ongoing legal, they may need access to that and they may need to be able to view it. So again, it's just, it's a legal issue that we have no outright jurisdiction on at the moment.
Yeah. That's fair, for that part of the building. I think, but I think regardless, the rest of the property that the property owners own is not under any legal issues at this point that I know of and they, it is in such disrepair and it drags down the entire village. And I don't live within sight of it, but I do walk by it and drive by it every single day and it is something that I'm, like, I want, when I go on my walks, I want to be inspired and, you know, and I'm not.
I'd like to look out my windows and be inspired.
Yes, yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, I know you understand the whole legal issue and what the town manager's saying. I know it's not an answer, but I mean, I think it's important that you, you know, put your concern on record and, you know, I mean, maybe a conversation with the building inspector also as to if there's any issues with the building.
I have called the environmental people because there was stuff that went into the river and they got it out of there right away, thirty minutes way back. That's before this building inspector.
Yeah.
I called and, oh, we can't go on their property, you know, it's private or whatever. I said it went into the river and they didn't want to do nothing. I called North Hampton thirty minutes, somebody was down there fishing it out of the river. Okay?
So have you talked to the building inspector at all?
No.
Okay.
Just to Brad.
Okay, and the assessor?
Yes.
When you go over there, you mean the assessor?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Okay.
And I've also talked to the building inspector for that specific portion of the building.
I'll be back.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve Cosme, here from Thorndike. I'd like to add to, well, Mr. J. Sac had said here about the property at, not only at Church Street, but also on Main Street, next to the beautiful bridge that we have. Time to time, community development director comes up and says, the plans for this, for the building, this and this and this. A few weeks ago, a group of ladies was here, I don't know, it was conservation or something, they're bragging they're gonna do this here, this here, and nothing's gonna happen. I want, do they pay taxes on that property?
They do, they, well, he just said that they were delinquent.
They're delinquent.
Well, that's what he just said. I don't know, I haven't looked, but...
I mean...
I'm gonna believe what he just said. I'm assuming he asked today or soon.
This is ongoing for twenty years. People won't spend any money trying to take them to court or put some pressure on them. Everything is just sitting there. The buildings are collapsing, the best thing we could have is a fire. That would probably solve our problem.
That was just gutted.
You know?
It's all brick, it's just, you know, we just have a fire there every five years when it was making egg cartons.
Do we have a betterment program in this town?
Betterment for what? Building, private buildings?
Buildings.
We don't spend taxpayer money on private individuals' buildings or homes. I mean, that's not what taxpayer money is for, so...
I realize that, but there are properties that are being devalued. We have eyesores like that. There should be some, some way to put some pressure on these people.
Understood.
Let's see some effort, what I'm saying. I see no effort. Just let it ride.
I don't think it's...
This is on Colonial Street in Palmer, I think we'd see some action.
Do you?
You know, hear what I'm saying?
Well, I would say this, the town has to, the town has to operate within the legal limits of the law. And so if our different departments go out there and there's nothing within the law that allows them to do anything, that's why things end up in litigation. And so I expect that, you know, the town manager is fully aware of the issue that Mr. J. Sac brought up. I think anyone that drives by there is very aware of the situation, but these are private people that own the property and no different than if your neighbor doesn't cut their grass or their neighbor needs their, their house, whatever, a new roof or there's garbage in the lot, and it's not, does not present a absolutely a border health issue, a conservation issue, a building issue. It's very limited what the town can do and we certainly cannot go on people's homes and start fixing things or going to people's homes or properties and start doing things on there as much as I'm sure that we would all like to do that at some point in time in our lives, so...
Well, it seems, from what I understand, that property's been taxed delinquent for years.
Well, apparently, according... According to Mr. J. Sac, it was brought current so that they could get their permits. And now he says that it is delinquent since June fourth, I believe is what he just said. So you could go down to the collector's office and find out for sure. It's public information. I expected so, yes, yes.
It'd be nice if we put a little pressure on these people and, you know, they're generating electricity, which doesn't amount to much, but it's, you know, the only thing that's going on there. I've heard there was gonna be a pot factory there, gonna have a theater there and, you know, just blowing smoke, that's it. I'll talk, no show, you know?
Understood.
Gotta have the right investor.
Good evening. My name is John Moeller coming from Three Rivers. Couple things go back on what Steve was talking about is, you know, how come the town doesn't have some kind of ordinance that people would keep their properties up to, you know, a likable thing? That would, why couldn't the town take the responsibility and change their bylaws where, like the trash cans, where I live, the house on the corner, the people, I came to the Board of Health and they told me they were gonna file charges against me for harassment. It's like they got the trash cans out by the road, grass is this high, kids running around. They finally cleaned it up, but year after year, I mean, you have to go through these things, the trash cans are still out by the road. You know, the town should make some kind of ordinance because you go around town, there's multiple places that people live there and it's not fair to the person who tries to live a decent life and take care of their property. The town should have some kind of ordinance set up that you guys can do that. I mean, it's not being, you know, unfair to anybody else. If you live in a house, you cut the grass, simple. You pick up the trash. When you get done with the dumpsters, it should be rolled close to your house. You go to some cities like East Long Metal, you can't have a trailer on your property. You got Sunset Acres, there's tractor trailer trucks parked on the residential roads. I called the police department, you know, when the roads are supposed to be clear for plowing, truck's still out there, they didn't do nothing. Truck's still out there every, every week in a residential area. You know, I ride my bikes with my grandson, car comes, there ain't no place, you got eighty feet of truck here in front of the house, car coming this way, where do you go? Right? You know, at one time, the neighbor across my dad's house had a tractor trailer truck, they told me couldn't park it there. How did things change? It's a residential area. You kidding me? What's in that, what's in that trailer? Right? And how come through the course of the winter, that truck never got towed, never got, they put cones out there? I guess that's okay. But also I would like to see if you could change your format here and I'd like to have a comment from the public after the meeting so I can comment on what is being said here tonight.
On the agenda items?
On the agenda items.
So we usually let people speak if they have questions on things with the exception of if we had a public hearing already on something. We don't usually let someone speak after the public hearing because we're already to the point of having a vote. But from the people that come in a lot into our meetings, they can attest to the fact that if someone has a question during an agenda topic, we usually, I mean, we can't talk for hours obviously because we have business to do, but we, I do allow people to talk if there's a question and I've always allowed that.
All right, I'm on the Finance Committee of Water and Three Rivers and their agenda is sometimes they want people to address, but I always say you should go at the end because I haven't heard what you had to talk about today. That's what, you know, I'm here for, to hear, how can I address it if I'm up here speaking before you guys have something to say?
Yeah, and what makes it hard is even if, if you were only allowed to talk at the end of the meeting, as we do our agenda topics, we're already taking votes on them. So it wouldn't serve any purpose to just have people be allowed to talk at the end of the meeting if they had a question or a concern because it would be too late at that point.
So where should we have our voice before you take a vote?
So if you had a question about something specific, you could ask the question.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
But I'm just, you know, it's like with these gentlemen, we're talking about people, you know, it's like my taxes went up over seven hundred dollars, okay? And, you know, the sewer bill and all that's going up, how come the town doesn't turn the thing into where your water usage, because it's really unfair for single elderly people to pay the sewer bill where your neighbors could have six kids and say eight people in the house and it should all evolve around how much water you use because what goes, comes out of the faucet, goes in the drain and goes into the sewer plant. So if I'm using less, like my electric, I'm forty-five percent better than the lowest person around me. So if I'm conserving water, why do I have to pay seven hundred dollars to flush my toilet when the neighbors got six kids, it could be eight people in the house. How is that fair? How come the town doesn't, you know, changing? It's not that hard, even though we've got multiple water departments, everybody is still, you know, paying taxes. Even, you know, it's like they were saying for the waste treatment plant, you know, it's only gonna go on the people that use it, but it's a town building. So if this place needed a roof, you mean to tell me certain people would be exempt from paying for it? You know, if you got sewer, I mean, a septic tank and a well, okay, so you're not using that, but your septic is probably brought to the plant here, right? So that you can assess them a little different compared to somebody who's hooked up to the, you should go by the water usage because that's what's being brought into the, into the treatment plant, you know, I mean, it's, it's...
Yeah, I've brought this up before because I totally agree with you that you have a single old lady, old person, you know, they're widowed, whatever, and next doors you have a family of ten people, they, why are we all paying the same amount? And I remember the first time years ago I asked, it's like, well, it's too difficult to get how much water usage because all the water departments are... But it's, it's not that you can't do it, it's just...
You can make, well, computers, you know...
Maybe now that you brought it up, maybe now that you brought it up, we'll get somewhere because I've, I've brought this up quite a few times and said that it should go by the water usage because what comes in is what goes out. And if I'm a single person versus a family of ten, and I think I've even heard, I forget who's, well, you know, the poor family of ten is gonna have to pay four times as much. Well, I didn't tell you to have ten kids.
Right, right.
You know, I don't know, you know, whatever, it's not right. It should be by what you consume and everything, aspect of your life, you pay on what you consume.
No, but what their trajectory for the waste treatment plant is gonna be fifteen hundred dollars per household. I mean, are you kidding me? And then, you know, it's like your taxes, my homeowner's insurance went up four hundred dollars, where, you know, you try to scrutinize and be more efficient and it doesn't matter. You know, yeah, you know, if you don't, if, you know, that's the cost, that's the cost. I can't understand why this town is stood so idle and people haven't spoken up about it because enough's enough. You know, you've got these multi, you know, housing units, how much do they pay? Right? They could, is, you know, it's like the school system. I don't have any kids in the school system, so why should I pay? It's just like the person that would say if they had a well and their septic, why should I pay? Well, it's part of the town, that's a town building. When you need a roof on a building, well, you know, they figure it on, your taxes go up, simple. You know, I don't understand the time that's being wasted by getting nothing done. You know, I can't believe this place doesn't even have more people in it, just talk about their sewer bill, seriously. You know, where, you know, now you guys want to, looking for two point five million dollars to fix it, how come, you know, money isn't set aside every year for certain things that you know they're gonna have to be done? You know, it's just like them cutting the brush along the river, that hasn't been done in years. And that's supposed to be mandated that the highway department does that. You know, do it in the winter when there's no bees, no leaves, take it, put it on the thing. You know, what happens if we have a hurricane? And all that, those trees, what happens is they'll pull through the rocks, make a nice dam between F and D tool and TAN brands and floods the town. Who's gonna be responsible for that because you didn't manage what was supposed to be managed? Simple. You know, at one time, I had a contractor when Jarius Groban was the superintendent for the highway department and the sewer treatment plant. You know, they would've came in and took all the trees and everything off the banks to make things where it was supposed to be. I heard the Corps of Engineers just signed us off, says, you guys, you guys aren't doing your part, so, you know, it's up to you to get it done and it hasn't been done. I think the last time, Alan Buregard was the last time they trimmed the banks. I don't know. But I'd still like to reserve a spot at the end to after what I hear here this evening.
You got it.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Okay. Next item is a public hearing at six thirty-five for loan authorization twenty twenty-five zero three for two thousand, two million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand for the wastewater treatment plant, dewatering improvements. This is the second reading. I will open the public hearing. I'm gonna do the second reading first just because, so you know what we're doing, hold on. All right, so this is an amendment to the Code of Ordinance of the Town of Palmer, that the Code of Ordinance is of the Town of Palmer, chapter one seventy-one, zone, no, that's not it, hold on, sorry. I trun- thank you.
Loan authorization one?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Or did the town appropriate the amount?
Yep, the amount of two million two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the purpose of paying costs of designing, constructing, reconstructing and equipping a centrifuge sludge dewatering system, including the payment of all costs incidental relate or related thereto. And that the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow said funds under Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, section one, seven one, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Okay, so this is a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing at six fifty-seven, any comments? So I will just, for comments, I will say that this, we had already, this is only already ever, so we had already authorized this at a prior meeting and due to a technicality with bond counsel, they requested that we reauthorize this debt. And so that is what we are doing. We are also, as part of this, we are rescinding loan authorization twenty twenty-five zero two that was approved on February tenth, twenty twenty-five. So basically, this is just a redo of a appropriation that we had already made. Anybody, counsel, public, anybody want to talk about this one? Okay. That's what we're gonna be doing, we're gonna borrow the money, yep. All right, I'm gonna...
And what's, you have a calculated number where our sewer taxes are gonna go up or is it gonna be excelled already from what they already projected?
It's, that number projected is built into the FY twenty-six rate.
And what's that?
Well, the percent, it's, it's per E D U.
I send a copy to every homeowner so they know what they're up against, so maybe you'll have more input here so they can go and so...
Seven sixty per E D U for FY twenty-six is the projected proposed dollar amount, seven hundred and sixty dollars per E D U.
For how many, next year is gonna be seven sixty?
Correct.
And from there on out?
I don't have a magic number for FY twenty-seven yet.
I, I see the thing at the waste treatment plant where it was...
I'm gonna ask you to, because if, you need to come up because anybody watching at home cannot hear anything you're saying.
I was at the waste treatment plant and talking to one of the individuals there and I'm not really sure what the date was, but the projected thing in the future is gonna be like fifteen, over fifteen hundred dollars per household. Do you have those numbers? Am I talking right?
That's only, that is only an estimate that Ty and Bond gave the council...
That was just to do the roof, that's not to do the rest of it.
Roof's already done.
Roof's already done and that's built into this.
But that was, that was what they were calculating for.
That was a whole list of...
It's a whole list of capital projects.
Capital projects that were supposed to...
Ten years that they were proposed. Now, we've already gone through, I think, two years since that was proposed and things have shifted, so...
Things have already fallen off the list.
Correct.
Right, they've already done it without hitting that.
But that's not to say in the future, it may still lead up to that. One of the biggest things is the NIFT's permit that, I don't know if there's an exact date on that, I think it keeps getting pushed back a little bit.
Three and a half years.
Which I still think it might get pushed back, but...
It might, but it ain't gonna be much, they're trying to get them all on the same page.
And if you look at the, if you look at the ten-year plan, that was, I think, fifty million dollars, I want to say, was the proposal we had to take out. So again, I mean, if that comes to fruition, that is gonna be a real life, we're gonna have to talk about how we're gonna fund that.
So are you guys ever gonna consider what I spoke about, about people's usage? You know, I mean, if you use more, you should pay more, simple. You know, it's not that hard with today's technology to make a computer thing where everybody, you got everybody in the town's paying taxes, they know who's on sewer, who's not, who's on water and what it's, I understand there's three different districts, but it's really not that complicated. Maybe the first year, you might have to alter things a little bit, but once you get all, everything on track, it'll probably be just a press of a button from this town, to Thorndike, to Bonsville, to Three Rivers, you know what I mean?
I can only speak, I've only been here since April of twenty twenty-four, but...
You know, I mean, is that, is that gonna be possible?
It's on our radar.
Consideration, you know, and people ought to know about that because it's really not fair, you know? I mean, other cities and stuff, they go buy water.
Yeah, so, so, and those are, and those are probably communities that the water, the water service is under the town, not under three separate districts.
But that doesn't matter.
It matters because we, the districts are under, we do not control the districts, they are under their own, they operate under their own tax ID number, they operate under, they are their own entity, they have prudential committees that are elected, we don't control those, we don't control...
The sewer still goes to one plant.
It does, but we do not, we, it should be simple, but nothing is simple with...
To get the information from them is what is gonna be...
That's exactly what we need, we need the data.
You know, like when they say they send me a bill, they would have to actually, each water department, just thinking quickly, would have to send the town every, every bill, every water bill that they send out, they would have to send that information to here, correct? And then the town take it and...
Why not once a year when they do the meter reading? That shows you how much you use. It should have...
Or you would have to hire somebody from the town to start doing meter readings.
No, but the thing is, is each, each district does their readings and so then it goes to their office, so they're gonna give you an accurate account of how much that household or business used, right? No, once a year when they do, you don't have to do it every quarter.
Well, we get ours every quarter.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying you wouldn't have to do it every quarter.
We can't talk about what districts do. We have no control over the districts. The bottom line is whether your district bills once a year, I think there's another district that bills monthly and he just said the third district does it quarterly, so...
Well, yeah, they do it, they do, like...
Okay, but, but the problem is, we don't, we don't run on the same computer systems, we don't have control over them, so yes, I agree with you a hundred percent. Would it make sense if we could bill sewer bills based on water usage? Yes, that makes sense. We're not at that, we don't have the ability to do that right now. This goes into the whole discussion about separate water and sewer, water districts and fire districts. It's a much bigger nut than we can deal with. It's a much bigger nut than we can deal with tonight. I mean, it is frustrating, I I understand. And as far as why do people that are on, on their own private wells and their own septic system not pay sewer? Because if, if they need a new septic system and it's thirty thousand plus dollars, the town isn't helping them pay. And so unfortunately, or fortunately, I mean, if you pulled this rum, anybody here who has a private well and a private septic system is not gonna wanna pay. And those people that have sewer are gonna say they should. So that's the bottom line.
Across the board, the same. It's like, I don't have any kids in school, so why should I pay taxes for seventy-
Because taxes pay for every service that the town offers. A sewer fee pays for tho- fees are for people that benefit from the service, and that's the way it is.
This treatment plant is still up from the Town of Palmer. So anything that has to be done, just like if you needed a roof here, a roof on the police station, the town hall, uh, the, uh, highway department, it's all Palmer. So you assess people, you know, I got a friend, if I could come up with a, a thing where he, he's pretty clever because that's what he does for a living, and give you guys the whole schmear where you could, it give you, give you the whole thing on a platter, say, this is how you can differentiate how much this, you know, you'd have to come up with a number for the people that don't use it. I can understand that. But still, they're part of the town. They should not be exempt, like the school. I'm not using, I don't know kids in school. I have no grandkids in school. So why should I have to pay?
Because you're paying for the future generations of society, and taxes are different. A fee is one thing, taxes are a different thing. You may never use the, you may never want dial nine-one-one and have a police officer come, but you pay for that so that if you do, they come. That's the bottom line.
Also, um, when you do have a sewer and you do need your septic pump, there is a fee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so they are contributing.
Usually, I mean, all right, so maybe we could set up a system if where if they're paying a portion, if you have your, and contract a source, a septic sucker with the town, if they're getting their septic sucked out, it'd be at a different rate than, you know, you gotta adjust that to. If people, you know, the sewer suckers come from out of town, they're bringing sewage, and they're getting paid a flat rate. They don't know where it came from, but if somebody says, okay, you live in Palmer, there should be a different rate for when it gets dropped off at the, you know, the waste treatment plant. You know, it's really not rocket science. You know what I mean? It's just, you know, uh, something on your computer.
If it was easy, we would be doing it, trust me.
Well, maybe-
Yeah, how do you know that truck did three houses in Munson, then came to Palmer, so he says, okay, these all came from Palmer?
Voucher fills. It's like, all right, so you know, the thing is, you, they get a slip on how much water they got sucked out of their system. Simple.
All right, we're getting beyond the scope of our public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Still happy to hear.
Anybody else on the public hearing issue? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing at seven oh seven. And now we are moving forward to a vote. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion and second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Oh, no, we're not voting.
This is just a- No, it's just a hearing.
Forget it. We're not voting. Sorry.
It's just a second reading, actually.
This is a second reading. There is no vote, sorry. Too much going on in my head. All right. All right, new business. Six forty-five. Public hearing on the fiscal twenty twenty-six municipal budget. I will open the public hearing at seven oh eight. I will open the floor to questions from the public. Any questions on the budget?
This, uh, Duke Field. It seems we already spent two and three-quarters million dollars to rebuild it. And I keep looking at that stabilization fund. You had mentioned to me that you were, you were putting aside a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars or something in stabilization.
Hundred and something, yeah.
In case the pavement starts cracking.
Nope, not in case.
No?
It, in ten, in ten years, it will need to be resurfaced in some way. And so we are putting aside a sum of money every year so that we get to the point where it needs to be resurfaced. We have the money to do that, so we don't have to have a huge capital outlay all in one year.
Every year, you're gonna put away a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
We are.
Or we could wait till it totally goes bad.
You people agree to this? I don't believe it.
What, would you rather, would you rather they wait, like John was just saying, to be proactive? You'd rather wait till in ten years, when the price is tripled, to go and get a loan to fix it? Or would you rather have the money set aside? I mean, I don't know, you tell me.
I'd rather see it, uh, street paved.
Well-
Yeah, oh.
That's chapter ninety money, and that also should be coming from your excise tax that's not separated. That goes into the general fund. So we, I mean, we could do this all night. That's, you know, you, she's trying to be proactive. We're trying to be proactive so when something breaks, that it's, the money is there to fix it. And if we didn't do that, you would be the first one to come in here and cry about it. Yes, you would.
I could care less about the track.
Well, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people do care about it.
You know, maybe we should stop having socialism, and if you want a certain service in town, this is what it costs you. And you pay that. You wanna send your kid to school, it costs you ten grand a year to send your kid to school. You pay that, you know?
I'm, I'm talking about track pavements, not, not the school issues.
Well, have you been up there to look at it? It's beautiful. And, and a few weeks ago, there was a dedication, um, in, in memory of, uh, it was built in, in, for Lisa Swistomnarsky. There was a beautiful ceremony up there, uh, a few weeks ago. And, um, you know, and to see the number of kids that were up there running in a track meet, it's something that hasn't happened in a lot of years before that track was fixed, and-
They said ten years?
It wasn't quite ten years.
It was close for quite a while, but they could not have, they could not have at-home track meets because the, the track was not in any condition to do that. And, you know, that was an investment that the council made. You know, the money was, a portion of the money was raised in memory of Lisa Swistomnarsky. The council supported that. We used ARPA money, I believe, to cover the cost of that. And I think that was, did not cost the taxpayers, I don't believe, any money. It came from ARPA funds.
ARPA, I think we had a little bit from free cash.
A small amount.
Small amount, right.
But-
I don't know, you did a job change for forty-three thousand dollars like, like nobody's business.
What's a job change?
Irrigation, or irrigation line.
Irr, yeah.
Put in the new sprinkler system. Remember, we were like, well, if we don't put in the new sprinkler system, they're gonna have to drive over the track to put it in afterwards.
Right.
So we approved it to go in at the same time as the track was being done.
Because the, that was, it was, it was beyond repair, is what they said. So yes, better to do that. But yeah, I mean, it was choices that we made, but they were, all these votes were happened at a public meeting, and they were all discussed thoroughly. There was a lot of discussion around the-
This is the same-
There were some backdoors going on, I'm sure.
No, there's no backdoor here. The, the-
You watch too much T- you're watching too much TV, Butch.
Get the, get the project going, I'm sure.
But this is the same issue.
Back to the stabilization.
Yes.
As far as putting away a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you could use that for tree trimming. You could, just below that, I think I saw fifty-five thousand dollars.
We're gonna be putting a hundred, I, well, next, at the next meeting, we're gonna be setting aside a hundred thousand dollars for tree trimming beyond what's in the budget.
Okay, my next question is, if it came down to laying an employee off and putting money into that stabilization fund, what would you do?
Our financial policies now require us to put that money into that account. That was part of the financial policies. That's one of the accounts that's outlined, that we continually put the amount we put last year plus five percent on top of that annually.
And who mandated that?
No one mandated it. It was just a financial policy discussion that the council had, and we voted that in last time, or not last time, but a couple months ago.
But this is the same issue that John was just bringing up, you know, Modoc, John Modoc just brought up, is that, you know, consistently, the town has kicked the can down the road for numerous projects. All of a sudden, it costs the town millions of dollars that we don't have. And now we're being proactive, we're putting money away so that we don't have to spend millions of dollars when that time comes again. If we could start a bridge account today, I would do it in a heartbeat, right? Because we have bridges that are failing.
That's right. You didn't put any money away for bridges.
Right, because we don't have the money. The budget is tight. You've read the budget.
But, uh, that money could be much better spent on other projects in town in over ten years, saving a million dollars.
If we don't save-
In case, in case.
It isn't in case, the-
In case you have a problem.
It has a showflave.
The engineers were here.
Right.
They talked about it. It was talked about at a public meeting. It has a ten, about a ten-year life expectancy of that track, not for it to be totally dug out, but it's going to need to be resurfaced. And the estimated cost of that was over a million dollars. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. I do not remember. I don't get paid to remember that. That's what he gets paid to do, and that's what we did. And I stand by that one hundred percent. And honestly, there are so many things that are, maintenance has been deferred, and one of those places is the wastewater treatment plant. And it, everything's gonna hit at the same time. And a lot of the things, as, as Ken said, is these are mandates by D E P, and that NIFTI's permit, that's, is that D E P or E P A? E P A. And we don't have a choice. If they say that we have to do it, we have to do it. We, that plant has to be, uh, that they have, they have stipulations that they need to run that plant by, and they have a permit, and that NIP, that NIFTI's permit, when it comes through, it's gonna be like, this is what you have to do. If we don't do it, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what happens.
Why wasn't money put, put away for the wastewater treatment plant?
Fifty million dollars, if that's the price tag, because nobody knows.
Whatever it is, you didn't put money away for that.
No, okay, so you know what?
You could've started ten years ago.
Yeah, we could've, but-
You're talking apples and oranges now.
Along the same lines, though, part of the financial policies is we are, we are starting to tuck away money, so we have it for projects for wastewater.
But what they've done historically is to not have the, the sewer bill, to his point, to not have it go up to where it needs to go up. They take the money that they've set aside in what is called a sewer surplus fund, and they use it, they dip into it to pay the cost of things. I'm pretty sure we're, we're dipping into something tonight. But, but that's, that's what has historically happened here over the years, is like, we don't wanna have the rate go up anymore, so we dip into it. It's the same thing when we, when we vote to use money out of free cash to cover some capital expenditure. That's the town's savings. It's, yes, would I love to build it up to millions and millions of dollars? Sure. But it's there to help offset things, and if that makes it so a sewer bill doesn't have to go up higher than what it's going up, then that's the choices that we have to make. And they're difficult decisions. And hopefully, we don't get to the point where, you know, next year, we have to be laying people off. I hope we don't get to that point. But if the economy continues to be everything the cost that it is, at some point, something's gonna give. I mean, it's, it's going to give. And, you know, I agree with Matt. If, if, if we could fix the other bridge, I've been saying that for a very long time, that we need to start, um, looking into that. And we actually, was that May, I think? May, we actually had Senator Olivera was out on that bridge. My, I was there, the town manager was there, Jessica was there. And we are trying to rally the troops so that we can figure things out. So just because, you know, you don't see everything that's going on, there's a lot of things going on, and those are decisions. Those are us trying to work with our state rep and our state senator to get attention to the fact that the Town of Palmer has a lot of bridges that are in disrepair, and we can't afford to fix them all. And maybe you don't like the Trust Bridge that's over on, in the other area, but the bottom line is, if we put in a, an actual bridge, I think that price tag was close to ten million dollars.
We're still on the list. Aren't we still on that list?
Apparently not for that bridge, is the last thing that we hear.
We're on the list, but there's no definitive date.
It's no funding. It's just, it's on a list.
I thought we saw twenty, under year twenty twenty-nine.
Uh, the one on, um, Maine?
Maine Street.
Yes, yeah.
Twenty twenty-nine, yes.
It's a long ways away. It's a long ways away when it's falling apart.
Take a ride over that bridge lately?
I was, I was standing, I just told you, I was standing on it in May with the, with the senator.
Drive over it now.
Yeah, they just put a nice new fence up, so.
To keep people off the sidewalk.
So, so the biggest issue is, right, is that rates have should've been gone up year over year, many, many years ago.
Yes.
And nobody wanted to raise the rates. So all of a sudden, we have a lot of infrastructure and no money. Right? And that's the issue. And now everybody's paying for the price that, that the rates didn't happen. And that's happening on the district level, too. Look at the water rates. All these big water infrastructure projects that are affecting the diff- different districts, they're raising the water rates because they didn't continue to raise the rates over the years to cover the expenses for things that are wearing out and being replaced now. We're trying to get ahead of things now. We're being proactive. We're trying to do things the right way.
It seems like it's gonna be hard to put money away. Thankfully, we have proposition two and a half.
Yeah.
That's what we have to work with then.
Sometimes I feel that, uh, we're going beyond proposition two and a half.
We're not allowed to.
We can't.
I know it, but it's, you see, when taxes go up, uh, seven hundred dollars.
Yes, because what's happening is since COVID, there is no housing stock. People are paying, there, there's bidding wars continually. A house goes on the market. You put it on the market, it sells for fifty, a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars more than what the person's even asking because there's bidding wars. And then that makes your assessed value of your home go up. And so that is why your taxes are going up, is because from year to year, if you look at, look at what your assessed value on your house is, it's not holding steady. It's going up considerably because the houses around you are selling. And so that's why you're seeing higher incomes. We're all, and that's not a Palmer thing. That's all over the country. It's definitely all over Massachusetts. And, you know, I mean, we, we can't fix that. I mean, the only way to have that be fixed is, you know, there's tons of housing stock again, and, you know, and, and unfortunately, that, that's just not the case. And, I mean, if you talk to people that are looking to buy houses, I mean, they're literally, they're Realtors. I don't know if there's a Realtor in the room right now, but literally, like, if you're not gonna bid sometimes higher than what the asking price is, you're not getting it. So, it, like I said, it is, it, it's not a good time to, um, try to make the town, in my opinion, to make towns function, because people are very angry, rightfully so. You know, everybody's, people are on fixed incomes, their taxes are going up, their values are going up. But everybody around here is just doing their jobs. I mean, the values have to be approved by the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, and actually, it's not even, it's B L A, right, I think?
Yeah, it's still Division of Local Services.
But they have to approve the values, and you have to show them that based on the sales, your values are in this area, which is ninety-five to a hundred and ten percent of the values of the homes. And so the assessors have to do that. And I mean, I, I mean, I think people should go to assessors' meetings and, and find out from them how it all works because, again, they're not making it up. They're doing what is done all over the state, and they don't have a choice. They have to do that. So-
I also gotta realize, this is Palmer. This is not Long Meadow, Wolverhampton, East Long Meadow.
I get it, but if people start paying five hundred, five hundred-plus thousand dollars, I mean, there, there is a home right now just a little bit down the road, it's on sale for over six hundred thousand dollars. If it sells for six hundred thousand dollars, then that's gonna bring up the value of all the ho- all the other homes like that. And in that area or in that neighborhood.
That's a conversation to have with the people who are willing to spend six hundred thousand dollars on a home. That is not a conversation for us.
Something that we can, you know, and of course, if you're selling your home and someone wants to pay-
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Well, this one looked pretty nice. Go on Realtor dot com. There's a few of them.
There's a couple of them that just sold.
If you put your house for sale and someone wants to take six hundred thousand, you gonna tell them it's not worth it, or you gonna take it?
No, of course.
Of course you are, so there you go.
I'm getting back to tracks. There was nothing wrong with the track at Legion Field. I'm going back twenty years.
It doesn't exist anymore.
Maintenance there at all. It was fine. I won't go into that.
Yeah, well, it doesn't exist. It's gone.
Yeah, it's gone. Exactly. Uh, one other thing, uh-
That was dirt.
The town, uh, the town does nothing with automa- automation. They don't, it doesn't seem like they-
What do you mean?
Uh, well, I'll tell you one thing, and you ain't gonna be happy with me, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I'm looking here, over a hundred thousand dollars in overtime.
For which department?
The sewer plant.
Okay.
That's a lot of money. I, I think it's time that you should look into automating some of these plants, if, if that's what you have to spend in overtime.
So you wanna-
So you wanna, you want to spend millions of dollars to automate the plant? That's, that's where I'm going. I'm just trying to figure this out.
Say, uh, nowadays, with automation, uh, and, uh, I'm trying to think what I wanna say here, but, uh, uh, like, let's accompany. Every, every substation is automated. Everything, you get an alarm, it goes right to a central station. We don't have, well, I shouldn't say we. They don't have people on overtime riding around checking the substation.
Well, the weekends, they do go and check each of the stations. Is that-
Yeah, we have to right now.
Right.
But he, he is on to something, but that goes back to that ten-year capital plan. That all these stations have to be upgraded. And that he's talking about a SCADA system.
Yep.
That's correct.
And that's all gonna be part of the upgrade. There's no sense in putting something in now that they're gonna have to rip out. Maybe redo the whole station, put on the pumps and everything else. But that is part of the ten-year capital, and it's to upgrade everything.
So electronic monitoring is gonna go into the pump houses when we upgrade? And that's already a part of-
We're putting some in, but it's not, right now, we're mandated by our permits to check the station seven days a week. And once we put SCADA in, that's a different story.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We only gotta go there once a week.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Couple things. He was talking about the overtime at, uh, the waste treatment plant. I was at tables one day, and it was four people from the waste treatment plant. We're there for an hour. How long is their break at nine o'clock? Fifteen minutes?
Yep.
So that means there's three hours to calculate.
So we're, yeah, so we're, we're not gonna talk about anything-
Well, I'm just saying, you know-
I, point taken. He heard it. But we're not gonna talk about anything that could be personnel-related, okay?
Also, is, does a town, does a town have like a, um, a kitty for a case of emergencies, or is it that if something happens, we have to, you know, scramble to get money? Is there like, do you have like a-
Stabilization. Stabilization, free cash.
Yeah.
Stuart surplus. We have that.
How much should we have in there?
Currently, I don't-
I'd have to, I'd have to go back to you on that. I wanna say... Let me see if I can get it in my town address report for the end of this. If not, I can get it next meeting, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I'll be able to pull it up.
You know, I mean, there's, uh, you know, it just go round and round, you know what I mean? It, it's, um,
Well, that's the-
In every department-
That's what he was just saying. He didn't want, you know, like, the stabilization that we're using for the-
The track.
The track and stuff, you know, and how much is getting put in there every year? There's money to get. Certain amount that gets put into it every year.
Well, I think it's a good idea that town puts a little money aside. My mom used to budget things by the dollar, so, you know, when something came up, they had a portion of the money to start. So it also looks good if you're gonna get a loan.
Yes, yeah. So we have finance, we have financial policy so that when we go and borrow money, we get, if you have different things in place, like a financial policy, and we try to get our debt, our, um, our, a bond rating up, our policies in place so that when we get Sanders and Poor or Moody's, when they look at us, the better your bond rating, the less you pay in interest.
How is our credit rating with the, the overall, if we need to get money, is our-
It's one, one step below the highest tier.
Say that again?
I think they're, they're a double, they're a double A, I believe.
Double A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not the, yeah.
So you get a lower interest rate?
Yeah, it's not, it's not, yeah.
It's not the top tier, but it's not even close to the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Um, our stabilization fund in twenty twenty-two, cause that's the most recent that the state's website has, is five million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand. But again, we're a couple fiscal years removed from that, so it will be different.
Okay. All set? Anybody else?
The, um, cherry sheets that just got released, better numbers for us?
Fifteen thousand over what we were originally projecting.
That's it?
Net, a net of fifteen thousand, yeah. It's between, it's between ten and fifteen, I think it's thirteen.
It still has to go to the conference committee, though.
Got it.
Yeah.
That wasn't solid yet?
No.
Okay.
No, there's still one more step.
But through the process, we're using our original figures, and if that number does come higher, we'll roll it into free cash at the end of the year.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine. Next item is boarding committee appointments. So these are all recommendations by the town manager um, for the council. If, if, um, if there's no objection, I'd like to just take them all as one vote. Does anybody have anything? Nope. Not to? All right, just gonna-
I just have a quick question. Does Palmer have a housing authority, or is this the Munson Housing Authority that we put people on?
Used to have one. We did.
It's Palmer.
We do have a housing authority. Okay. Can we update the website? Cause it says every seat is vacant, and that it definitely says on the website, too, that Munson is managing our housing.
They, the chair may be from Munson technically.
Okay.
But it's a Palmer organization.
All right. No, just checking, yeah. Just wanna make sure that we're updated.
Website, just to confirm that. The website has-
Every seat is vacant, yeah. And then there's a webpage for Palmer Housing Authority that says Munson is managing this.
Which technically could be true.
Right. I just wanna make sure that we're right. We update, that's all. Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna read all the names, um, into the record. I apologize if I butcher anybody's name, okay? So we have Michelle Rami to the zoning board of appeals, term to end six thirty twenty-eight. Joan Micah to the board of registrars, uh, term to six thirty twenty-eight. Dave Cotter to the conservation commission, term to six thirty twenty-eight. Andrew Haley to the recreation committee, term to six thirty twenty-eight. Carol Sikorsky to the board of health, term to six thirty twenty-eight. Russell Webb to the Palmer Housing Authority, term to six thirty twenty-eight. David Buzzell to the Palmer Housing Authority, term to six thirty twenty-seven. Catherine Isaac to the Palmer Housing Authority, term to six thirty twenty-six. Carlos Fertado to the Palmer Redevelopment Authority, term to six thirty twenty-eight. And Stephanie Riaco to the Palmer Redevelopment Authority, term to six thirty twenty-eight. Do I have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make a motion.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so the next is appointments to the ordinance committee, which is required under the charter section nine dash five A. And do you have the language in front of you on that, or?
No, but it's, it's nine members. Um, there is the town manager, there's two appointments from the council, and then there's six seats from the public. So even with this, um, this is everyone who put in for it, there's still three more that we advertise and hopefully get up commitments by July.
Okay. So, uh, again, for anyone interested, this, these appointments are part, uh, it's part of the town charter under section nine dash five A, which requires in years ending in a five, that we appoint a committee to review the ordinances of the town. And we did not get, we need six people from the public, and we only got three. So, um, I'll take the first, first ones first. So I'm, um, looking for a motion to appoint Brad Brothers as the town manager. Matthew Warzek as a resident, Lisa Newton resident, Dave Pasquini resident.
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we need two council members. So we talked before about members of the ordinance committee, ordinance subcommittee potentially being members. Which was, I believe, Matt.
Chris and Phil.
Phil, right.
Three. We need two.
Right.
Yes, they need two. So don't all jump at the same time, and if you guys aren't interested, if there's any other counselor that is interested.
I'll try and do it as good as I can. I'll do it.
Okay.
I'm traveling a ton, so if anybody else wants it.
So is Chris.
My thought is, based on having, um, legal counsel be a part of this process, which is outlined in the charter, that most of these, honestly, would probably be remote.
But even then, traveling for work, I don't have remote access.
Just putting that out there.
Right.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I mean, Chris didn't give a-
Right.
So, I mean.
And he's traveling a lot, too, so.
Do you wanna try it?
Yeah, we can do that. You can put me on there.
Okay, do a motion to appoint Phil and, uh, Matt. Make a motion.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, next we have to accept the donation of an eighteen hundred, eighteen hu- eighteen hundreds bell from Divine Mercy Parish. Um, this Palmer Cultural Council. Someone here from the cultural council? Are you handling this?
Um, Lisa?
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Um, Palmer Cultural Council, um, wanted to celebrate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. We did a survey, we walked around, we talked, we met in Carl's diner, and that with, uh, the, uh, Father Stefan. And we came up with several ideas, but the Divine Mercy Parish has graciously asked to donate this eighteen hundred bell to the town of Palmer to represent the great people of Palmer, which they said, uh, deserve such a thing. And, uh, to promote liberty and justice for all. So we put that forward to you to accept the donation, and we hope that it'll be placed with the library, the library approved, and that's it.
It is getting placed at the library, right? That was approved? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I like, I like to thank you, Lisa, and, uh, and, uh, Mrs. Fountain for doing all the work. And it's gonna be a very nice thing and a patriotic thing you ladies are doing.
Thank you. We're an all-American town here at Palmer, so it's a good thing to have a liberty bell to symbolize that. We have them all over the town, so thank you so much.
Beautiful. No, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's, um, yeah, it's beautiful. Thank you so much for approaching us. Um, well, we need to appropriate some funds for restoration, or is it?
It's ready to go.
Okay, excellent.
There was a little bit of fund needed for a plaque for dedication.
Okay.
Uh, but that's been taken care of, and so, yes, it's ready to, to go, and everyone's kinda pitched in.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, do we have a motion to accept the donation from Divine Mercy?
I'll second.
Aye.
Anybody?
Aye, yeah, we're good.
All right, next we have, um, an update or on Lemonade Day? Julia Taylor. And friends.
You guys gonna come up?
No.
Okay.
Well, those are three of our entrepreneurs. Um, Julia Taylor, nice to see everyone again.
I'm Christina Hazard. I work at Country Bank in Palmer, so I'm partnered with- Um, we're entering into our second annual Lemonade Day, and I just wanted to thank the town of Palmer for supporting the event as well as, um, let me read from the list. Um, the Palmer Public Library, the Three Rivers Chamber of Commerce, Country Bank, J. Stiller Insurance, Sate stands in Pulaski Park, Palmer Domestic Violence Task Force. Um, as we enter into our second year, we have fourteen stands signed up with thirty-five participants.
Wow.
Um, classes start on Wednesday, and they'll run for three weeks, and then we have Lemonade Day on June twenty-eighth. And we're inviting everyone out to come join us and check out all the entrepreneurs this year.
Excellent. Awesome.
And we have a town resolution for twenty twenty-five, um, for everyone to sign if the town so approves Lemonade Day this year.
Perfect. Great. Do you wanna read it, Mark?
Sure. All right. Proclamation, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, as Lemonade Day Palmer. Whereas Lemonade Day is a free, community-wide educational event, providing children with the opportunity to learn and apply entrepreneurial thinking and create a foundation for success in the global economy. And whereas Lemonade Day exists to infuse today's youth with the spirit of enterprise in teaching the basic business and entrepreneurial skills necessary to become successful, contributing members of their communities. And whereas Lemonade Day has a core philosophy of spend, save, and share that is implemented by teaching children how to start, own, and operate a business, learn goal-setting, develop a business plan, establish a budget, seek investors, provide customer service, and give back to the community. And whereas Lemonade Day offers opportunities for families, businesses, schools, youth organizations, faith-based communities, neighborhoods, institutes of higher learning, and government agencies to unite for a common purpose to train the next generation of entrepreneurs. And whereas Lemonade Day is an event that demonstrates to young people, the town of Palmer and surrounding communities, that they are important and citizens care about their future. And whereas the town of Palmer salutes and commends organizers, volunteers, and participants of Lemonade, bleh, Lemonade Day, a program that advances life skills, character, and entrepreneurship, and extends best wishes for a successful and rewarding observance. And now for, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Palmer hereby proclaims June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as Lemonade Day Palmer, and encourages all residents of the Palmer area and surrounding communities to participate and have a role either by selling or buying lemonade. Signed this day, June nine, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks so much. I'm so excited.
Thank you for doing this again.
You have so many kids already signed up. That's so good. Yeah.
Excited.
Yeah, last year you had five, right?
Yeah, so we tripled this year.
That's what you had to read.
I think that this is a great opportunity. Our community has a lot of sports, you know, things for kids to take a part of, so I think that this is just a great alternative to, um, you know, sports that kids can still be involved with and another great activity that's going on in town. I think I can't even emphasize enough, like I had mentioned, um, is Stephanie still here? Um, when she was here last time about all of the great things that the library is doing and involved with, and this is just an extension. I always wanna amplify that for everybody who's here, that our town is doing really great things.
You guys really are.
Thank you.
Super proud. Thank you so much.
You're a part of that.
Thanks.
Okay, next is zoning amendment, uh, for two parcels off Palmer Street from residential to neighborhood business. First reading, Mark.
Which one is this? Oh, three or oh, four?
It doesn't say. It's the park one. I had it on top.
All right, and I'll read three first. Ordinance twenty twenty-five oh, three Z. Amendment to the Code of Ordinances for the town of Palmer, that the Code of Ordinances for the town of Palmer, chapter one seventy-one zoning, be amended to change the zoning of map twenty-nine, lot one, and map twenty-four, lot four, off Palmer Street from rural residential district to neighborhood business district.
That's the first reading. So, um, the public hearing and second reading will be at our meeting in July, correct? Okay, next we have zoning amendment for two parcels off Park Street from town residential to highway business, first reading.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh, four Z. Amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the town of Palmer, that the Code of Ordinances for the town of Palmer, chapter one seventy-one zoning, be amended to change the zoning of map fifty-five lots one forty-three and one forty-five off Park Street from town residential district to highway business district.
Okay, same thing. The public, the second reading and the public hearing will, will be at our meeting in July. Next, we have a departmental update from Todd Carney, our facilities director.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, my name's Todd Carney. Um, I'm the new facility director. I've been here for approximately eight months. Um, I have a list of some highlights that- Marlene, put it on the slideshow so that it can be viewed.
I didn't get any response back from you.
Okay. So, anyway, so in my eight months here, um, some of the things that I've, uh, been involved with was the installation of the new front steps for the town hall here. Uh, the installation of the door operators and the security system within the building. Uh, came in on a Monday morning. Uh, for some reason, the floor in the handicap bathroom buckled. Uh, within a week, I had a brand-new floor replaced in that bathroom, and then I proceeded to paint it uh, something for matching colors to make it look aesthetically pleasing. Um, in the process right now, um, it should be happening this week on installation of some mini-split units for the building department, where they did the renovation over there, so we can have equal heat throughout the smaller offices, where there was just two units for one big room uh, before, so nobody gets cooked out or frozen in the wintertime. Uh, some of the other things that I've done was over at the police department. The construction started this morning on the new handicap ramp. Um, one of my, on my first week here, I noticed that there was only two emergency lights in the whole entire council of aging building. That was on two separate floors. Um, I had an electrician come in. He changed all the exit lights uh, to combo units, so- uh, to combo units, so they also had, uh, emergency lights and exit lights at the same time in case if the power went out. Uh, some of the stuff that I've actually done in-house is, um, one was painting the bathroom. Um, I put all new light switches because they put LED, uh, LED lights in the auditorium upstairs in the council on aging. They were all on dimmer switches, so dimmer and LEDs do not work. So when you turned it on, the lights would like buzz unless if they were just right on the dimmer. So I changed out all the switches there, so they were just regular light switches. I did that in-house. Um, they got a new TV installed, I think by impact upstairs in the auditorium. So I installed some shelving units so they could have a DVD player, and they could put other things that they use for daily activities.
Todd, just one clarifying point. Um, everything he's mentioning now is for the council on aging, not for the police station.
Yeah.
You said police station.
Oh, police station, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes.
I was following you.
Yes, uh, I responded after hours at the police station. Uh, we had a sprinkler vice, uh, sprinkler pipe burst uh, in the middle of January underneath the carport. Um, so I showed up about nine o'clock at night. I was able to find where to isolate the sprinkler line to prevent it from leaking and shut off the compressor, then proceeded to call in our sprinkler company. Uh, they came in around midnight, made the repairs, and we were back online the next morning. Um, and I've done a lot of stuff just within the town hall. Um, I've gotten to know everybody in this building as well as all the other buildings. I think everybody feels free to contact me in case if they have an issue, and I'm quick to respond on trying to make the repairs to the best of my ability. And it's been a really pleasant eight months working here.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, where's the money coming from for all these projects? Mini-splits and all that?
We had it all available through a facilities line item.
Okay, no, just curious. I don't remember funding that, so it's all good.
Yes, and some of it was through, also through ARPA.
Okay.
Yeah, some of the, some of the bigger projects we did were through ARPA.
With the ramp and everything, I remember that, right?
Yep.
But the day-to-day stuff, we moved money from, um, I shouldn't say we moved money. We allocated money when we hired the position.
Yep.
And on top of that, a lot of the budgets, um, for the specific buildings all have facility and general maintenance line in there as well.
Okay. Gotcha.
I just have a question about probably six months ago, Matt was here giving a presentation about grants that he had received from Pooh Piss to Rose in the town, and Sheer, the thirty-two, was one of those. I'm just curious whether we might see something like that start.
Yeah, that's gonna happen, and it's gonna be in the fall.
It'll be him.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, next we have Resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-one, which is funding the snow and ice deficit. It's a transfer of one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents from free cash. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-two, which is a transfer of eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents from the sewer surplus to the boiler replacement capital project account. Is there a reason, like, did something happen on this?
Yeah, um, the, the quick, the quick answer to this is, um, and again, I can't speak for prior, what was proposed to you guys, but, um, most of our capital projects over the last few years have all been allocated to the penny with no contingency funds. So something like this that you're seeing for requests usually is absorbed through contingency money. That was never appropriated in any of the funding sources we approved previously, so any small dollar amount would've had to come to you guys. Now, changing that going forward when we do projects, there should always be between a ten and twenty percent contingency fund built in, that that's gonna be the request going forward, so we don't have to come off with these one-offs. If anything, I'll be coming back to you saying, we are returning back X amount of dollars to the project.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, we have, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-three, which is a transfer of one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars from free cash for the sealer deficit. So this is a, um, a revolving account that they overexpend it, and so that it doesn't hit free cash at year-end. We're looking to fund the deficit. And in the fiscal twenty-six budget, this is no longer gonna be funded through a revolving fund. It's gonna be funded through a budget because we're gonna be now contracting with the state to do the inspections.
That was my question. It was gonna be, yep.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just out of curiosity, why did remove L and M? First truck through the agenda?
Uh, Rich was unavailable tonight, so if there's any technical questions, I want him available to answer.
Okay.
And.
The ten-wheeler truck, you say?
Yeah, we got pulled. We'll, we'll, we'll discuss that next week.
They're still trying to push that they need a ten-wheel dump truck.
We'll talk about it next week. Okay, I'm sure we will. I know.
Yeah.
Okay, fiscal twenty-six town manager goals. So myself, Jessica, and Mark met. We developed goals. We then met with Brad because, as you all know, the, the goals are supposed to be mutually agreed upon. And so this is what we came up for goals, and, uh, we're just looking for a motion to approve so that he can start working. Now, these are not all one-year goals. Some of them are multiple-year goals, but, um.
For the rest of us, can you say the goals?
They're in our pocket.
Never mind.
They're very long.
Thank you.
Yes, so they, the goals range from increasing public outreach and improving public relations, facilities, maintenance, and comprehensive infrastructure plan. Facilitate business and economic development. Advance human resource and personnel management. Financial management. Communication and intergovernmental relations. And there are several action items under each one of them. So do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve?
Matt, second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You in agreement?
A what?
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're good. Subcommittee reports?
Nothing from us.
I just gave you the goal subcommittee.
And the budget.
And the budget subcommittee.
Check, check.
That's, uh, on the website if you're looking for it.
Okay, thank you.
What's that, the budget?
The budget.
Yeah. Okay, town manager's report.
All right, so just to recap, one question that came up earlier, should say two questions. Um, I'll read off quickly our stabilization balances, and these are as of April sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. So general stabilization has two point nine million. Capital improvement stabilization has three point one. Duke track stabilization has two hundred fifty-seven thousand. Uh, free cash was approved for three point one million. Debt service was seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Our OPEB was two hundred and two thousand, and then our sewer surplus balance was one million, two hundred fifty thousand. And again, those balances are as of April sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. Um, I would like to give a thank you to all the volunteers who helped with the, uh, community garden. Um, we had, I think, over twenty volunteers, so it was good to see the community, um, get involved in that. I'd also like to congratulate the class of twenty twenty-five and their graduates from Palmer High and Pathfinder, and good luck in their future endeavors. Um, the rec director, the rec committee met, gave me a recommendation for two finalists. I interviewed them last week. I'm still deliberating, and I'll be making an offer most likely by the end of this week, um, and hopefully get someone in here to start for July one if possible. And then, uh, just to recap, one thing that came up about the sewer rate discussions, we have had discussions with Time Bond on what it would look like to really put piecemeal all that in together. And the big takeaway is that we need, at the end of the day, we need the usage from all of the water departments, and they're all on different billing cycles, so it's a big undertaking to ensure that. But without that data, there's no ability for us to bill out differently than the EDU we charge right now. So I'm gonna work with the water departments. Hopefully we get a agreement on the data because I, I think we all do agree fundamentally that, um, it does make sense to charge per usage. But reality is if we don't have that data, there, it, there's no way to alter what we offer right now or how we bill right now.
I think that, that's just another kind of, of the many reasons why we need to consolidate and have one fire and one water district because it would make it that much easier to fairly, um, assess sewer charges out to, to families and businesses.
I agree.
Yep, and then the only last piece, I will say, um, a lot of things, the questions that came up tonight were ordinance-related. Um, I suggest maybe we, I'll set up a, uh, an email account that folks may submit their requests, and the ordinance committee, review committee can actually look at that and, and take into consideration what the public, uh, is recommending. There's a few, man, I know we talked about the, uh, the trucks on side streets and things like that.
Changed that issue.
Exactly, so, uh, hopefully that, that ordinance committee can really review that and make recommendations to the council that we can adopt and move on. But the big thing is we need people. We're still three people short on that committee. So if there's a volunteer in here that's interested.
Sir in the back corner.
John?
What can I do for you?
We need someone to volunteer for the ordinance review subcommit, or ordinance review committee.
What does that consist of?
We can talk to the town manager after, and he can let you know, and then, but it's reviewing all the town ordinances that are on the books and, uh, meeting with department heads, and so if there's any that need to be, that no longer are applicable, we would need to know that, and then any suggestions from department heads or the public regarding new ordinances that would be necessary. But, um, you can reach out to Brad.
One thing I would like to comment on is the shooting ladies, uh, last thing about combining the water departments. I don't want Palmer's bill because they gotta pay monthly. I pay quarterly. Do you live in town?
I have to live in town in order to be on the town council.
Okay.
She's in Thorndike.
Thorndike, okay. Well, Three Rivers, Bonzville, and Thorndike wouldn't have a problem meeting and being one. Palmer, at one time when they lost their wells, their superintendent asked John Sager, what would be the most practical thing to do? John says, drill wells would be more expensive to begin with, but if you have an open aerial reservoir like you do, it's gonna be more expensive down the road because you don't know how much chemicals are gonna cost down the road. What did they go for? An open sewer. Basically, the water is, I'm sorry, but the thing is, I don't know, people in Three Rivers will never, ever go with a combined with Palmer. You know how it all came about? Back when the Red, uh, the Quabber was being built. They were gonna sell us water, but Palmer, they didn't wanna have nothing to do with it because they already had their wells. So, so these individual villages had to come up with their own plan and ran more efficient than the way Palmer is. I don't want a, a water bill every month.
Yeah, and I've expressed to the Palmer Water District that billing monthly doesn't make sense. And, uh, and that's just a formality that can be worked out when the districts combine. But I will never be convinced, I've worked with three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in this state, and so few of them have more than one water department or one water district, and I will never be convinced that that is not an option for Palmer.
Well, you know, how, with today's technology, what would it make to make a, you know, a program that you get all the information from every water district, how much each individual, if you take a meter reading once a year?
Okay, so I'm gonna, we are, we are, we already talked about this. The town manager already said that they were, he was, he was researching it.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm talking to her directly.
I know, but.
Like the way she's, okay.
Again, it, we are, we've already talked about it. That's, it's not up to the council to figure out. I mean, I think everyone agrees that there needs to be discussions regarding the districts and that we, I think a lot of us agree that it can be, uh, more efficient and more cost-effective to not have separate district, separate districts, especially fire department districts. But again, we do not control that. There needs to be discussions. And honestly, if you're getting up here and you're saying, you know, it doesn't help when it's like, this is what happens all the time. One, District A is not interested. District B is not interested. District C is not interested. Well, the people of this town are interested. The people are sick of paying for duplication of services, and so I do believe that there is going to be some group of people that are gonna come together to address all this. And so the, the day is coming, and we need to stop worrying about what happened a hundred years ago because that's.
The basis weren't started.
I know, but, but it doesn't matter because we are, we are living in the year twenty twenty-five, and everybody needs to get over the fact that fifty, sixty, eighty years ago, I have no idea, well, apparently before I was alive, as to whatever happened in all these districts that made everybody basically not like, you know, this one doesn't want, so again, we need to, we need to.
No, it's mills. It's our mill history.
No, no, no. It's, it's, yes, we had mills, but the issue becomes that if, if at this, if this day and age, if we should be having discussions where we can all get in the same room and talk like grown-ups about the fact that things can work and not talk about Miller Brewery was coming in in whatever the heck year that was, and you know, there might've been a, a casino on the hill, and there might've been a park. They didn't come, okay? I don't know why they didn't come. I know why some of them didn't come because I was alive. It got voted down. We need to move on. It's like, you know, everybody's critical about, about what this council does. The things that get voted down don't get voted down by the council. A lot of the things that got voted down got voted down by the public at large that came and voted, so.
Right down the home.
So we literally have, we've, we've talked about this beyond what I think we need to talk about tonight. I think that, again, I think there's a group of people that are interested in having these conversations. Hopefully the districts are willing to have the conversations, and I do believe the day is coming, so.
The only one thing I got left is we, we lost the opportunity to combine the fire departments and all that with the police station. Didn't go along with making a, a town, you know, with accommodation or.
No, that is not true. It's not true. They're in, because they're individual. We have no control over, we were, that building was, that building was never going to be a public safety complex.
We never felt, you couldn't have a public safety complex because the fire departments are separate from the town.
And that's what needs to happen here is everybody needs to be on the same page with the right information and not the rumors that have been circulating, so.
I'll talk to it.
Perfect, thank you.
There is a Facebook page now for combining the order.
And fires. Yeah, I don't, I can't keep up. Okay, miscellaneous correspondence. I do want to, um, say that I received a number of emails from eighth-grade students at, um, Palmer High School um, as part of one of their classes, and just to give you an example, um, there were, um, questions about new businesses, whoops, playgrounds, sidewalks, potholes. The ambulances was a big topic. Um, another one about new businesses and potholes, uh, new urban designing ideas.
Are these suggestions or questions?
These were letter, these were emails that were, um, sent out speeding, fishing. There was one about animal control, uh, sidewalks, ambulances, Converse Middle School, um.
Are you putting together a response?
I responded to all of them.
Oh, wow.
And so it was very time-consuming. I did respond to all of them. Motorized vehicles on trails was one of them. Uh, I did, I did send, um, some emails to our conservation agent, some to Brad, some to the DPW director, some to the police chief. Um, I think those were the ones. And anything that I felt could be better addressed. I know, um, the town manager responded to one. Um, I know the police chief responded. Conservation may have responded, but, um, I have asked in the past for an opportunity for some of us to go in and just talk to the eighth-grade class about their emails rather than, it is a lot of work, and it wasn't just thanks for your email. Like, I tried to give actual explanations and, of different things. Um, but that hasn't happened yet. But anyway, I did respond to all those. Um, also, not really miscellaneous correspondence, but I do wanna let everybody know that I, so we had set up the, um, the meetings um, to be coffee with a counselor at the senior center, so I did the first one last Thursday. Um, I thought it went very well. Um, one of the big issues was the parking um, around the senior center, the lack of parking, and so I will be talking to Brad about a few ideas. Um, we did talk about, um, different programs and different opportunities for programs. programs, uh, and some of them, um, they seemed excited about, so it's gonna be, you know, Marlene was there and Cindy Jayzac was also sitting in the, in the room, so people had some fairly good ideas, um, I think there's a lot of, um, opportunities, uh, we talked a lot about getting the word out that actually what happens at the senior center and, you know, trying to kind of reinvent themselves a little bit so that they can get messaging out that, you know, what they do, why it's so important for people to go to the senior center, um, and so, one of the things that we talked about was maybe doing something with impact where they could actually do some, you know, make a video about what happens at the senior center and trying to get, uh, interest, so, um, one of the things, so besides the parking, another thing, Brad, that brought, was brought up is whether there could be a PBTA stop at the senior center, um, which I thought was actually a really good idea.
Where's the closest stop downtown?
Well, it's one at the library.
The library is probably the closest stop.
Sure.
I just, I know there's one at the library, whether it's the closest stop or not, I'm not, right?
Yeah, I don't know, so, anyway, um, so, Marlene did send a, um, email around for you guys to all sign up so that if everyone goes once a month, uh, and so nine-thirty seemed to be a good time, uh, they do serve breakfast, and so there was, uh, there was several people that were there, they were there for breakfast, so they were eating breakfast while breakfast was being served while we were speaking, um, but I, like I said, I thought it was really good, uh, it was a little bit over an hour, um, and, um, hope, they're, they're very excited about it, they think it's a great idea, they're looking for, forward to other people coming forward, so, um, if you guys could just, um, coordinate with Marlene, and then you literally have to figure it out like almost a month before because they put their newsletter out and they wanna be able to announce that that's still gonna continue to happen, so, okay?
On the PBTA thing, we still have Paul representing us?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
We get that out to him, yeah?
Yeah. Um, okay, that was my stuff, anybody else have anything they wanna talk about? I guess we're kinda doing council's roundtable, miscellaneous correspondence together, nothing?
Uh, I'll just mention, to piggyback off of Brad's comments about the community planting day, that was a lot of fun, I was able to attend with my husband and plant a lot of plants, which is something that we love to do, um, and, uh, there were a lot of people, which was really great to see, a lot of unfamiliar faces, so it's always good to see, uh, new people getting involved, and it looks really nice out here, so can't wait to see how it all grows in, and then also, our Memorial Day parade and ceremony were very nice as always, um, and don't forget, the election is tomorrow, ten AM to eight PM.
So I just, I was gonna just announce that, so we have the election tomorrow on June thirteenth, the Building Bridges Luncheon at Amets Post Seventy-Fours from twelve to one, and then on June twenty-sixth, the Library Summer Reading Kickoff Party is from one to four.
I just wanna mention really quick too is that even though we do not have a mowing ordinance in town, it is a board of health issue, and if you are a business...
How is it a, this...
Nicole's in the back, if we can have Nicole come up and talk?
You, you got people that grow hay, okay, that have hayfields, and all of a sudden, somebody got their grass a foot high, everybody gets so goddamn excited, but not one person will go to that person's house and see if it's somebody old that can't take care of the place or whatever, and it's a board of health problem, why? Because mice and stuff run, you know, they don't run through the woods and stuff, I just see total BS.
Alright, let me finish, 'cause it wasn't even residential, it was more along the lines of that...
I don't care where it is.
If you're a business owner on a main street, you should have a bigger responsibility to make sure that your property is cleaned up, and if you don't, you will get a letter from the board of health stating that it needs to get done if somebody formally complains.
Garbage and trash, yes.
But your kids didn't mow the lawn that, when you were gone?
No, no, I, my lawn is mowed, but I've got a couple on my hit list on Main Street that I'm after, so...
I'm so tired of people trying to control...
Yeah, and we did a few of those last year, if you remember, there was a few of, uh, parcels that are actually even for sale still, that are, uh, they probably need a phone call, but we were on it last year.
Yes.
Yep.
And that is one of the reasons why I'm not pushing for a mowing ordinance, 'cause people like Phil will come out with pitchforks.
Like, like, there's one over by the junction there, and I know it was a little old lady
or whatever, had, had passed away, now, everybody would probably call town, piss and moan and bitch, but not, not one person would extend a hand to go and help, except, well, rebel down the street there, and while we're on it, um, you know, you're talking about businesses, how many years has it been okay for the old Palmer Tire place to look like it looks? Just saying.
Yeah, I wanna congratulate all the graduates, uh, just to say, don't wish your life away, you're gonna look back forty years, say, this is the best time of my life, then you gotta go to work every day, enjoy, and, uh, if anyone needs any guidance, uh, what career to go in, and I think I've seen every job possible go through my door, so I can give them guidance what to do.
Are you hiring for the summer?
Uh, yes, if I extend my hours.
There you go, come down and apply.
Egg prices go down.
A little bit, it's killing me.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Healy.
Okay, so we're gonna adjourn from formal session, we're going to go into executive session, we will not return to open session, uh, we were going into open, uh, executive such a section, session, under national law, chapter thirty A, number twenty-one, number, or section twenty-one, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the cha, chair so declares, this is for union negotiations for Palmer Police NE PBA Local zero seven one, Palmer Police Dispatch UFCW Local fourteen fifty-nine, and DPW Administrative Unit UPSU Local four twenty-four M, do we have a motion to go into executive session and adjourn there?
Make a motion.
Second. Motion by Matt, second by Jess, roll call vote, Matt, Carl, Phil?
Yep.
Jess, Matt, Mark, me, yes, okay, good night.